Good evening. So for those who don't know, Dan Young is our Senior Director of the Office of School Modernization, and Kent Fisher is with Terry Construction. They're our Program Manager and our Construction Manager for the 2012 bond. We're here tonight because a couple things, and I guess I really like what we just were talking about down there, even though you don't have it all figured out, the new board policies, procedures, protocols, because we're sitting over here as protocol people, which you really have to be on the construction side. And there's a lot of ways we could do this, and Dan tells me when I got here, 18, 19 months ago, it's, hey, you know what? This is what we did at the first board, when we took our first master plan. So we did our first construction phasing. They didn't care. They told us, you do it. This other one, they did care. So let's just talk about it and find out how you want to do this. So what I started to think is, at least for our three new board members, what we did, we don't have to do what we did in 2012. That was two boards ago. But what we did in 2012, it was, come to us with your master plans that are done. And then we'll approve, ask questions, have this forum. Now you launch your architects in the schematic design and the design development. And before you go any further, design development, come back and present it in front of the board event. That's what we did in December of 15 with Grant High School. Architects, big, whole dog and pony, here's what we did. We even have the DAG members come up, Design Advisory Group, they talked about the input and the process, and what's great, and what's transparent, we did the whole deal. So here we are now with, we did master plans for six months last year. We did our pre-design diligence, which helped us really refine the numbers to help this bond be successful for four months this time. And so we have something. We have a very big detail. We got the master plan committees back together again. We have a great big detail PowerPoint. But then we had the executive summary, the one for the bond stakeholder advisory group, VSAG. So if you were a board member and/or a VSAG member, we can walk you through it. It's just a repeat, you'll see it again. But we thought that if the second part of this, we took to the board previously, a month ago, we said, here's our recommendation on how you do these projects. Well, it was informative and it was interesting, but it wasn't this seated board. And this, and past seated board said, we don't need to vote on the priority. You guys know what you're doing. And so we didn't ask for permission. We did what we thought was right with Franklin, Roosevelt, whatever. But I don't know. We're two boards removed right now. So I want to talk to you about what our priority is for ruling these out and get input from you. And someone said, I don't want to vote on priority, or I don't want no priority unless I know something about the jobs, you know? So we're giving you an overview if you want to know more, if you want to know less. But we thought we'd tell you about the projects and the big pile of food that you have there. So is that okay? I mean, we just, we just, I'm looking for answers on how you want to know, when you want to know, and what you want to know. So sequencing and then overview of the projects themselves. And, and, and what happened, Terry? Okay. All right. So I'm not going to read you, and especially, we met with all of you beforehand. Our goal is to get through this work truly as quickly as we can, but as safely as we can. We have incredible safety record going on right now. And if there's some wood around here, about 96% complete on all these projects, literally, when we take a look at it at the end, we will be over millions of hours, because there were about 1.2 million hours last summer when we checked in on this. And we're up to maybe six accidents, maybe seven, all minor. So it has a lot to do with how fast we're moving or how fast we're not moving. And that's huge. If that slows the jobs to the crawl, so that's why we know, we've learned how much we can take on cash flow and workflow and sustain it without having issues out there. We have our own, our standards and our ed specs and code requirements. And then we want to sequence the work so it maximizes our efficiency, it reduces impacts of budgets, project schedules, our quality if we go too fast, and then our ability and resources to manage it where we don't have to spend more money on management and less money ends up in the classroom. So we just want you to know that we looked at Kellogg, much like they did with Bobian before I got here. You look at our ed spec, you look at the systems on the building, you look at the overall condition and our, and the health of the building, and then how many areas is it under our ed spec on? We put all of that into the pot. What would it take if we did this project? Why are we here already? We should be, do you have your handout where we did the executive summary? I apologize. But let's walk through the executive summary. Okay. I thought the whole thing was in the PowerPoint. Yes?
I don't want to paraphrase the words here, but question.
Yeah? Please.
Do we need to take another look at the ed specs in light of our experience over the last five years?
In what regard?
Well, we already, so we have the original ed specs.
Yes.
And then when we were into it, you know, things changed.
Oh.
And they would change.
Oh, sure.
And they were the square footage and all that. So I'm just asking the question.
No, it's a great question. So we're on my version 2.5.
They're a living, they're a living.
Yeah, yeah. So we changed it wholeheartedly twice. We've made minor revisions two other times. Comes back with additional criteria coming forward. And we just did a minor change in conjunction with PAT. Our person does ed specs, myself and all their offices, that numerous times, and they just want the ability to have it be optional to do the collaboration area or not. Okay? So we're up to speed so far, and this is kind of our, would be our fourth kind of official change to them. But it should be dynamic. We always should be looking at it.
Are you still at 100% utilization as a model?
That was just the term that, it never made any sense, and it's out of everything right now, so.
Franklin is still, whatever it is, they still have less classrooms than teachers.
No, no, they actually, they do not. Go ahead.
I mean, we never really had 100% utilization as a term. Many of our high schools, before they were built, they have, not many teachers have had their own classroom. And that's still true after the design. However, what happened with the new high school design, they're much more efficient and flexible to allow for more utilization than they have had before the design. So that's the whole notion of the 100% utilization. I'm not sure quite how, so that counts on. It never existed, and we have, we're now operating with these kind of terms either.
And so I do know where it came from. It was the term that our architect who developed the ed specs used. And that was, and then so it was just a term that, you know, me coming into town and having done this many, many, many times before, you're never 100% utilization anyway. So it was a very awkward term. We've gotten rid of that. And the grant model is really how we're going forward. We explained the grant model to the PAT and Franklin teachers, where it's a combination of the new principal and her staff, and the teacher department is looking at number of teachers, number of spaces that don't change. They're very certain, the CTEs and the sciences, they're very fixed on what they do, how many are prototypical classrooms, how many changes does a teacher have to make maximum a year? They have criteria they put together, and it goes in and it comes up with a percent. And 67%, I think it was, of Grant does not change. So what we met with PAT when we did the ed spec is, that analysis can go on with the teachers, with the staff, not just with the architect and the staff, or the architect and OSM, bring the teachers to the table for our next one out, and take a look at that model. And 38% might move into one school, or 72% might move and have more than, you know, shared classrooms. So they wanted that option and a flexibility to have that looked at. One thing that we did hold the line on is, if you want every teacher to have, we can't grow these sites anymore. The taxpayers aren't going to fund them. We've already added 20, 30,000 square feet, which is about 15 million each site. We can't grow them anymore. You're still 280,000 square feet overall. If people want more classrooms, something else is going to have to be less. Either the overall size of the classroom, or some other program comes down, you've got a 280,000 square foot bucket as we head into the Design Advisory Group that we're talking about. So we gave them that flexibility they were looking for, and that's all they asked for.
So can I ask?
Yeah.
If you have that written up, you know, the grant model?
Yeah, we did.
I mean.
We did, and it's in there. And they, and they actually wanted it so they could take their teachers for a vote before they decided they're going to back the bond or not.
But maybe can you give the full board the information that was given to PAT?
Yeah, it's on our website, but we can, we'll pull it off, and we'll get, we'll get back to you. Yeah, no, no, no. They wanted, they wanted to see it, they wanted to see it agreed upon, they wanted to see it written, they wanted to see it posted, and then they were very careful, and they wanted to talk and see if they want to support the bond or not, so.
And the other important thing about it is that it's not just about the amount of space, but it's about how teachers move between classrooms and which teachers move. And this is actually Carol Campbell's really developed the whole protocol, because at Franklin, part of the problem was that it's very unorchestrated and inefficient. And she really created a protocol for how to best work with the constraints, and so that's kind of what informed it moving forward.
And you know, I think it was three things, when you really listen to them, and part of it came out in Marshall Lotte Report, which we had independent consultant come in and analyze and interview how we did these things. And so it was, it was the collaboration areas, it was just sharing of the classrooms. And we felt like the early architects and OSM team just said, this is the way it is. And we're the educators, and they're an architect, you know? Well, they do do education for many teachers and many school districts and many, many years, but we just felt like it was just, we were just told, this is it, this is the way it is. And I got to believe some of that is true, because I've heard it so many times since I've been here. So many times I've heard that. So I got to believe it's true. So we're going to go back. We think we started something well with Grant. We think that we did the pre-design diligence part of the second round of master plans. We expanded that a bit more, and we're ready with the DAGs on first schools we go into to launch fully into. Yeah? No, thank you. So on here, just want to do an overview, and then we'll get to our sequencing. So when you look at the first one, if you're looking at Kellogg Middle School, the executive summary, so we went in, we took a look at the existing site, the condition of it, the systems, everything, how much it was in and under ed spec. And I'm not going to read all this to you, but I just want you to see the very top is important. It would have been about $38 million to try to fix that thing versus about $32 million to take it down and build it new. That was pretty straightforward, you know, on how to get there. It kind of followed the Bobian model and then cost model, and it kind of followed the, how we took Bobian down, and these numbers are in line with percentage-wise with what new Bobian costs. It's not as large as Bobian at about 100, 105,000 square feet. So the model suggested to us with all the diligence that we did, this is a teardown. And that's, we want you to know that, because we don't get into politics on whether the site tells us and its conditions and its costs, whether it should be a teardown or not. So when we plugged this into the model, much like they did for Bobian before I got here, Kellogg was a teardown. It just flat out isn't close to, it's not, it's not historical, it's not close dollar-wise. And Lincoln was a teardown. It's not historical to look at that thing built into that hillside, to look at the ADA and the ed spec issues and everything, and how many areas are in the ed spec. It was a teardown. So that's how we look at it. After we're done looking at it, and it is what it is, then if it becomes political, it becomes political. But that's really how we took a look at it. So I want you to know in this executive summary there, and there's a lot more behind this, the due diligence that we did, all the different systems, and we looked at it, we analyzed it for its growth and that area. We looked at it from the underserved, we looked at it as what its challenges are, and we did a pretty deep dive as to what this would take meant with the city on a couple intake sessions. Just want you to know, we didn't just kind of, you know, come up with a, with a number. If you go next to, we're just following, we have a little mechanical, you look at all the pictures, and you look at the peeling paint, the lead paint that's just peeling off of these and everything. That was pretty crazy. If you, we even held a tour, I think Paul, you were with me that day?
Yes, I was.
Anybody who wants to come and, and see Kellogg, we did a walk-through and kind of have your skin crawl a little bit, you know, I mean, you're welcome to do so.
Oh, yeah. Lead from the nose and ears for two weeks.
That's right.
Oh, yeah.
And you, and you get into your color code, or all the different ways, I love smaller than the ed spec, larger than the ed spec.
Paul, did you wonder why you were the only one with that hazmat suit on?
And then what I want to leave you with on Kellogg is, our recommendation is to get going on this right now. The site is clear, the site is empty, no one's in the site. The architect can start drawing right away a set of abatement demolition plans. They think they can be aggressive, have them done by the end of the year. We could be bidding this thing out, take it down while the other part of their team is designing the new in conjunction with their new middle school ed specs, and then put that out to a separate bid so we can try to pull a timeline from 2022, 2021 in so we can get this thing occupied with kids. That's the whole ten, this, we don't know why we would wait. We actually have talked to the architect, we're in negotiations. We're hoping the board agrees. Again, we weren't asked for, we weren't asking for board permission first bond, but we just want you to know about that. If you decide you want to vote on it, we can come back right away again at a board meeting, because we want to get that one moving. We think that makes sense for all the reasons that we'll share again on here. Madison, if you look at our overall costs on the project, the diligence that we did, the things that we saw that weren't working circulation pattern-wise, we went into areas again where it's under ed spec, where it's over ed spec, where it's in the wrong areas. Checked out site conditions. It's got a lot of issues with fall from one side to the other from an ADA standpoint. Just want to show you what this deep dive did. Had a great group out at Madison in the master plan committee. And I will tell you that the first master plan committee, I was told they were about 15 in number, and then after attrition, maybe 10 people. And so when I got here, and someone's going, oh, Grant is starting to get to like 20, you know, 25, and I just said, I'm sure it's 50. I mean, what's the issue? You know, the more people that are involved, fine. And so we opened these back up to 30, you know, and we've been cruising with like 22 to 25 on a lot of these, you know? And so it doesn't, doesn't have to be 15.
I was going to ask a question about Madison.
Please.
I can't quite tell, it's the only one where it doesn't, I'm not saying streets. So the 87th is where on?
Yeah, it's one street access, and it's right off in the front. So when you look at, yeah, it's just missing.
In the south. Here it's.
Yes.
Which is the?
Correct.
I'm sorry, so it's the sign where the sciences are? That is?
Yes. Yes, because the parking lot is right along each side. Yes, please.
So the entrance, where is the entrance of the school now? It's still on 82nd?
Yes. Yes, it's right, well, you're, it's right. Right, the entrance is, the entrance is right here. This, this is 82nd, right here. Got your field, it's got the football area, this drop-off loop, and the front door is right here.
And that was a big point coming out of master planning, is that there is no street presence, there is no real projection of the school toward 82nd now, and then everybody was agreed that that needs to be remedied.
That's right.
They wanted it right towards 82nd.
Right. Yeah, yeah, but they wanted to have a presence. No one even knows it's there. So part of this design is how to put a building in the very front where that area is. And then, this is an interesting site, because it is very large. If our ed spec was around 280,000, we're about 325,000 square feet, super wide hallways. I've said you could drive a couple cars down them. And at first blush, it looks like it's a pretty good shape, but you know, our mid-century building, wouldn't mean by that, it was in the 1950s and 60s compared to our 1910s. They have a lot of unreinforced, non-structural masonry in them, which is a lot of brick really holding the walls together and the corridors. And in an earthquake, in any event, that rubble comes down, and it makes it difficult to get out and navigate and get out of that building faster. So we have a URM database, thanks to, I think, the city, that shows all our schools are unreinforced masonry. But you know what? Aside from that URM, and it's an issue, we have schools that have unreinforced hollow plate tile mid-century. All you know about is the Bensons, you know about our old ones, that's what's on the list, but we have others that are not on that list, and they all need addressing. And you just can't do it until you do the deep dive, where you tear everything open and get into them. So Madison, and we'll talk over why we have Madison going next. But if it doesn't matter to this board, the other board wanted to see at the time, Grant come right out of Marshall in 2019. That site doesn't sit empty. Madison goes right in. That's the schedule that we'll be showing you. That suggests we got to get Madison going right now. The other thing is because of that sample with the architecture, we are out in the street right now with an architect and engineering RFP. We are going to be closing in on 21st of July. We'll be doing interviews by the end of August, somewhere around there. We're trying to get an architect onboard. If it's the same architect that just finished this, we can keep moving. If it's the architect who did the first round diligence, they've got some time to get. If it's a third entirely different architect who has none of this 11 months' worth of background, that's going to be questionable, but Madison can even go right in in 2019 from a design standpoint into Marshall. We'll talk about that again in a moment. We talked about project sequencing, but I just wanted you to know.
Let me just back up for one second. Jerry and Dan and Ken, I want your opinion on this. So when you look at the planning time on here, and want to talk more later about the design and permitting time, do you think that the master plan investments that we made actually bought us anything in terms of schedule?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. And also bought you the election too, because we have rough numbers.
Right, I mean, I totally, I totally agree with that.
Yeah, without refining 60-some million down from the first round of master plans, you, actually a little more than that, you have no Kellogg to talk about as a renovator or as a brand new.
But did it, did it actually buy us design advancement?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Good. That's what I always assumed, but.
And I know we have two years in there for design and permit, but permits have been getting longer and longer.
We're going to work on that.
Let's get, let's get in the timeline in a minute here. Are you with it? It's, we want to do exactly what he's talking about.
And you're, you were the skeptic that I wanted to hear that from, so good. Yeah.
All right. Because that's the second part of the conversation. I wanted to just walk you through this in case I have any questions. So anything else on Madison?
So just a general question about how it's set up. So this is a July 11th presentation, and then the planning, three months. Is that three months from July 11th, or is that three months from some other?
So, so we have planning, right, we could start planning right now. We actually haven't, there are some things we're doing right now. Like I want to say, we're doing a phase two, we're working, planning is going through the RFP process for Madison, is negotiating out the contract to contract language with the architect for Kellogg. We're in that right now. And if today it was like, yes, move forward on these products, it would even take it to the next level. We would start to by August, don't want to do it too much in the middle of summer like right now. We would do an email to our master plan committee members first for each of these with the timeframes. There's no sense, you know, emailing all of them right now. If some of these are stagger start, and they're in third position or fourth, but we would email them and say, we'd like to roll over and be a DAG member, and here's about the commitment of time that we need out of you. And if by the 25, 10 people say, I want to keep going, then we want to publicly advertise for other folks to get onboard on these. And to me, there's no limit on what, you know, we've been finding that around 30, 32 is the high, and who wants to be onboard of these and say what. So that's part of the planning process really that we want to continue with. Yeah. And we are doing a, we are doing a phase two on Lincoln this summer while the kids are gone anyway, which is more environmental, going and checking out some more things on the site. It's just the right time to do that, whether we have the approval on the sequencing. Kids are gone, we got to go on, we got to do some more testing. And so we're not stopping, that's going on right now. Lincoln, if you roll to that, and we have, we have same criteria in here. We looked at it, smallest site, highest enrollment, we looked at the restrictions. We're going to talk about timelines, and you'll see why. This is a two, what I call a two-step process. The city gets involved with its own permitting and timeline, and on the other side of the river, there's a planning commission over there, and it's so full, you got to, you got to go before them, you have to present, it gets put out to other folks, they can come after other criteria, and they can put it on top of you. We know this, because we took, put two portables out there, and by the time we were done with input and add-ons, they averaged out to be $1 million apiece for two portable classroom buildings out there. So it's time, and it's money, and that's why we didn't want to relinquish any of that savings on the Lincoln design schedule, because we know what this is going to bring.
But we also want to change that dynamic to some degree. We also want to encourage a new way of doing business with the city.
Which is fine, but I won't change the planning.
With this $190 million investment.
Yeah, we want to change the way.
We know that there's some appetite on their part for it.
Well, they just changed, they just got rid of the business, the business of services director because of the customer service problems that happens.
Yeah. One of the issues they still have is, is what we still have, is they have a lack of people. When we met with them, we, you know, last fall, we went and said, just want you to meet the new people. Here's a new person, I'm a new person, you know, David, Hobbs, and Pam. And we brought a new team out there, you know, this is Perky Wilton, we sat down and met with him. And they said, actually, we can't about this, the fees are getting from you guys, and everyone else right now, if they're growth, the money's there, we can't get enough people to do, can't get enough people in here. And we talked about, well, you know, in California, when we get overwhelmed, and there's too much for the state architect's office, or they outsource to approved engineers or people who they know, well, we're taking a look at that. So we said, we'll be back if a bond passes, and when the bond passes, we'll be back. We don't need to explore these conversations any further right now. Bond passed in May, we're trying to land three schools this summer and open a fourth. They're going to hear from us in September, we're going to get the other again, we're going to get the conversations going. So the challenges of Lincoln are here. Lincoln is a site that, one of the cost factors, we look at the very beginning of this, is so Madison would lead in theory, that's where we did the cost and go into Marshall, close site, can move faster, be more efficient, like what we're trying to do with Franklin. You know, Roosevelt is a swing site, they're literally that close to us, which is what Benson's going to look like when we get over there. Kellogg will look just like Bobian, it'll be flattened out, we're going to try it again. Lincoln is interesting, because Roosevelt-esque, Roosevelt-esque in that, they're going to be in the original building, we're going to go down out of the field, we're going to build the new, because there's no swing space on that site. We actually looked at and did analysis of what if we took the football field and loaded it up with portables and worked them around so we can do a section of Lincoln and keep rotating, and you see the cost generated right there.
It was going up either.
And it's not going up either, right? And so that was, that was the bottom line. So when you got into it, when you looked at the cost of putting the portables out there, it would have been 186 million to try to make that work versus build a new Lincoln, get into it and get out of the old Lincoln, which then came back in at a much lower cost. So again, we're talking about the taxpayer money, so. So that's where Lincoln is. Has probably more non-ed spec space on it than just about any of these other than Kellogg. And you start moving all the shelf pieces around, it's just not productive to be in there. And it's not like parts of Franklin where it was historic or believed to be historic by the community, so it's a teardown.
What you mean by non-ed spec space is like wide hall, wasted space?
Anything that if we decide that classrooms should be 980 square feet, and they have maybe, say, just making this up, they have like 80% of classrooms are not. We believe a new library should be this side, they are not. We believe a new cafeteria should be gymnasium, they are not. Nobody had the second gym. Did anybody have an auxiliary gym when first started the bond program? Just so maybe someone did, maybe one, but so you're dramatically under the ed spec space. Right. So it's a, it's a three-phase project. You build the new, you move the kids in, for an entire high school to be knocked down, it's going to mean you'll be abated and demolished and taken away. That could be seven, eight, nine months. And then there's building a field in phase three where no school was. So it's three phases. So if someone says, well, that's not going to be ready or done until 2000-whatever, Well, just like Roosevelt, here's the first phase when the kids go in, here's the second phase when the kids go in, here's the third phase when the fields are done. So, we're talking about kids in building, not when project is done. There's two different dates we would want you to know about, three technically different dates, but two different dates. Kids in building, project done. That's really what it is. And we want you to know that. There are two models that we looked at and the schematic design will really shake out the way to go. There was the preferred, if you go to this page right here, there's like the five-story octagon type, if and back with deeper soils. So, this corner of the site down here has active stream bed under it? Old landfill? Okay. And we are boring samples in our tests, so I'd say our geotechnical stuff. We probably have to go down 45 to 50 feet before we hit bedrock. And that would be whether it was the five-story version or whether it was more economical and it was the taller, the, the nine or 10-story. So, the preferred is the taller. We'll shake that out more with the day. It doesn't matter. It's 208,000 square feet each way. It's whether it's one more or one less, a little higher, a little lower. So, that's not so much the issue. The reason we want, we'll talk about it on the timeline, we want to reserve that timeline space, is there's a potential for this to get out of the ground with issues because of those things underneath and unforeseen. So, but that's whether it's the five-story or the nine, 10-story. So, we'll shake out the preferred. We costed them out. They're relatively the same either way. And so, the design advisory group prefer the taller because it also changes around the dynamics of the spaces on the side and it creates a space. There was a space for previous superintendent that said, one day, we might have a cave by out on that side as well. And so, there should be a space, a green square left behind for that. And so, we had to honor that during the master plan and pre-design diligence because that's what was asked of us. And the taller one creates that space if there were to be that one day. Also create a spot for partnership development with someone else as well. So, there was a lot that went into that.
Or tennis courts.
Tennis courts. Any questions about Lincoln? It would be our, we'll see up here, least complex, Madison, next complex is Lincoln. And then you roll into Benson in terms of the high school. So...
So, are we just, are you going to address schedules separately?
It's coming up.
Okay, so you're just going...
I just thought this was part of this. We're going right into this next. Okay. So, the Ben?
One quick question. So, while Lincoln is under construction, what, where do athletics happen?
So, that would be like Roosevelt or anywhere right now. We work with Marshall Athletics Department and the facility is leased somewhere else for those couple of years of duration that they're out, right? So, different than Franklin, right?
There's a field in Washington Park, the Archer Range.
We've already had initial discussions with the city about getting that term to as the Lincoln. Get that done by the time we go into construction. Does Nike want to do that?
Yeah, well, we talked to them, well, there was a whole, like Lincoln, the city of Portland's conversation about that in, I don't know, three years ago. The, the Marshall Park was being master planned at the time. But now, the time we should go back.
Yeah, we have initially revisited it with parks in terms of it being available when the construction starts. We need to push that.
And that's why sequencing is going to be really important. I want to talk about it. Internally, you know, like right now, you know, we, we need to staff up. And what does that staff up looks like? And then what it looks like? And how do our people roll off these projects in August, September? And how do they roll? We need to know. We need to know because with Lincoln and Benson, I guarantee it, it's going to be like Long Beach Unified where I came from. Where it's so urban, you are looking to rent a space somewhere in a building for a year or two to have furniture go into or construction offices because you can't fit trailers on the site. You're looking for parking somewhere for all the workers or for all the materials to arrive. And then just-in-time inventory to bring it over to form work that week. And you need to start nailing these things down and negotiations. And you gotta know that. So, when you know you're sequencing, that's when you know how to get in there and the same thing with the field you're talking about and everything. It's, you know, for us, it's our roadmap. So, I just say it's only everything for us. And that's why when we were wondering from two boards ago, do we ask for permission or do we just go? And that's why we're trying to give an update tonight. We're trying to get some feedback. So...
Just on that point, I think it would be good for the board to approve a plan versus you guys just going and then perhaps getting second guests later.
We would like that. We, you know, Dan explained, when you approve our master plans or the architects come and engineers and we do the full deal, then one of you aren't coming back. Or if three retire off and three more come a year or two from now and go, where, who came up with that crazy idea? Lincoln, 10 stories tall? Did you guys just make that up on your own? It's like, well, I mean, I mean, this is where it is and you guys said that. And so, that's why we're doing that.
We did approve the master plans.
Right. So, we, we would, we would feel good about that too. We do want to move, but we do want the approval and, and wishes of the board and the input. And be able to directly talk to our architects and engineers during the presentation if you have any questions. Which is why I also really like the work sessions, study session that you guys talked about tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I would think having sort of a high-level package that has some date ranges in it, that like the sequencing would be good for every understanding, I'd say, just so that you can move, but also have some flexibility in moving. But it's, I, I think, I just think as a board member, I feel like people, there's a sense that we're ultimately accountable to the community for that. So, it would be good to have the consultation and be really intentional about how we're going to move forward.
We, we want that too.
Yeah. And I think it's important also to do that in a, not in a board, in a committee meeting like this, but in a more public or more most public meeting. So that's, the public is aware of the arguments that we're making and agreeing to about the sequencing. I think it's really, let's bring everybody along. Let's do it very, very publicly.
We would concur. You know, Scott, the second time around with the pre-designed diligence and even the B-SIG group, it's, you know, the question was like, well, hey, wait a minute. Who said Benson was 1,700? And who said that Alliance and Multiple Pathways is out? And it's like, well, my first board meeting, November 3rd, 2015, revolution number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. I mean, whatever, you know? So, we, we would want that too. We, we, we would want that. In case somebody questions that three-year fund wrote, so thank you. We'd like to do that and get back to you guys as soon as we can with the full group. So, so that's it with, with, so Benson. So, Benson is, is going to be our, it's our largest project. If you look at it, it's about 370,000 square feet. It's on 365,000 square foot piece of land, okay? And only because it's vertical. There's hardly any room to work on this. It's historic and it's landmark. So, we couldn't take it down even if we want. This will be one of those ones that I think we're off the bat and spend more dollar per square foot than it would if it was brand-new construction. Which parts of Franklin is that way. But we, there's nothing we can do about that, you know? So, this is going to be difficult. It's a large project and where the kid's going to go and it's a focused option. It's not just portable classrooms and a portable or somewhere else. So, this is going to be complicated in terms of how we get materials on site and offices, just like Lincoln. It's going to be complicated in terms of how many bays is a drag out into because we can't leave the auto shop. There's nowhere else to do it. Partnerships have to occur. This is going to need some time. This is going to be a difficult one for us, no doubt about it. It's our crown jewel for difficulty of the first bond and the second bond. And it actually will be more difficult than anything we're going to take on in the third bond other than, I think Cleveland's going to be really constricted for site space over there as well when we get over to that site. So, with that and the background of them, we wanted to get to what we talked to you all about. But now we have our seated board, is our sequencing. And assuming they hear me anymore, we'll have Dan start talking about Kellogg. Some of this you've seen, but then why we're talking about what we're talking about. We really want to kind of focus on the timelines at this point.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Jerry. So, a lot of these, I won't go through the slides. You've seen quite a bit of this before. We've seen it, guys, pretty much all of this before. We talked about the sequencing also. We don't want to stack the projects as much as possible. We talked about the reasons for doing that. One of the big ones is certainly kid competition. They have a hard time with getting competition right now. Cover, just to call it, with one project out there, we have a brand out there on the street right now. We have a very hard time attracting contractors. If we start putting multiple at the same time, it's just going to get exacerbated and we're going to be in a situation where we're just taking any one bid that we can get, which obviously we have one. Obviously, you need to be very high in competition. So, along with leveling resources here at PPS, we don't overload not just OSM, but also the other departments and the amount of work that, paperwork that we process and the work we go through. We've been about right now $100,000 a month of work in place, which is, which is a lot of work for the district to handle. So, those are some reasons why we don't want to spec them, do them all once. So, we want to have a stagger impact to them. We, we talked through different considerations that we went through of what we're looking at. If we're going to sequence them, what's going to go first, what's going to go second, what's going to go later. And ultimately, we landed on was starting with Kellogg right out of the gate for sure. There's no impediments to doing that. But I have a very clear need with the D-RAC conversation going on. So, getting Kellogg going as quickly as possible, we're doing that right now. Madison is definitely the simplest hook between high schools. It certainly has some complexity. But it's the smallest, it has the clearest path through entitlements, through permitting and land use, getting into construction and is, is the smallest in budget and substantially similar to brand in a lot of ways. So, that's our easiest high school. Lincoln's our next simplest, yeah.
So, east of the, of Madison, is the other permanent sign?
It's cleaner.
What's, what about it?
In relation to Benson and Lincoln. So, it has a conditional use requirement, but it doesn't have a design review. We'll have to go around Lincoln and where Benson will have initial use and we'll have a name that we'll take.
Why doesn't Lincoln have a design review?
To send Centra.
Yeah. There's a Central.
Central City.
Central City Planning Commission. Again, held our portables up over a year and they came out $1 million each and cost.
So, the idea is to go with, with Lincoln, or excuse me, with Madison first, follow staggered, followed by Lincoln and then by Benson, as Terry talked about, is the biggest, is the most complex. It's going to have a lot of things into it, just figuring out where all the swing sites are going to go and designing and completing all those swing sites and moving everything is going to be quite a challenge. So, it's definitely going to have the longest design figure. So, that is the...
I'm trying to say to Kellogg, if you said, Jerry, and Dan, if I said you could start Kellogg right now, how you look? And we say, well, we have the project manager on board. He's ready to go. We have the architect on board. We're negotiating the contract. They can do the demolition, abatement, demolition phase. What we need is to get the middle school ed spec and wherever that team is, it's going to be part of it, moving. And we have to figure out the way with where D-RAC is right now. We want to build, we want to build a design advisory group for Kellogg. And who are they? Since we don't have all the feeder elementary identified, but we think we know. At least two, four of the major would probably be. We want to get that group going. Want to extend out an offer to them in August or late August, September, wherever he comes back to school. Want to get that group going. Want to get the ed spec moving. It's moving, but we need to move it and finalize it. So, while we're doing the abate and demo, we are also getting the design ready. We don't want the architect hitting into too deep in the schematic design without having an ed spec. That's your roadmap. That's your guideline. So, those are, we're ready to go on the one end. There's a couple of things. We're ready to turn up the heat and get them going.
Drive over there tonight and set the blast.
Okay.
Okay, so, question about the middle school ed specs.
Yes.
What do we have?
So, we have from, it hasn't been our office involvement. So, we have the Office of Teaching and Learning. We have a framework. It's a little more than a framework, but it's not a finalized ed spec. And we need to move it. We need to get that group and who's going to be now with some of the people leaving June 30. And we need to get that group together, find out who's driving and, and who's going to be part of that group. And PAT, when we met with them regarding the collaboration and, you know, said we'd like to be there for middle schools. Well, we don't just want to be there in the high schools. We need to identify that group and we got to get moving on it.
What's the drop deadline? What's the drop deadline?
How? If you, it's how fast you want to occupy Kellogg?
So, so what, who is on point on the education side to, to drive that to a conclusion in terms of ed specs?
What's a good question is, Bun, who's the part of the curriculum that's shot? She should be the executive sponsor of the project. And she has to bring the funds to work on the framework and be working the, um, Denisonic on that. I talked to Denisonic today about it. It's why I said, I want to get up to speak with them. And I will come back to you with a plan to unfold in that framework, flush it out. I know we have a skeleton of some sort of the framework. It's not flushed out, it's going to be yet. So, this is something I'll be working on, continuing, world of plan, with the timeline and what we have to do.
And I would think you want to move on it for another reason. Yes, we're going to do something at Roseway Heights in Tubman and get ready. But if it's, we know there's site constraints or building constraints. But I also don't think you want something going on in there that's too dramatically different than what your ed spec is saying. Otherwise, you're going back over again in three more years and trying to change it. And, you know, it's, you take a whole bill of holes. So, I would think we want to know that for a number of reasons.
Jerry understood everything you said about all the work you and your department did around capacity. But Scott, I know you've really been in the weeds on what the needs are in southeast. Are you good with 675?
The answer is, I don't know. Okay. And that's part of the data analysis. So, among, among all the data requests that, you know, is on the list.
Yeah.
And that, and, you know, and that gets back to, we've talked about this informally. Like I appreciated the Lincoln site that we're saving the green space. But we might have needed those green spaces at other schools as well. We have, we have no facilities plan. That's our real facilities plan. That's done in concert with the city looking forward to where we, where housing is going to appear going forward. We really need to get at that. And I know you're, that's on your agenda as well to, to move that.
One of the things as operations, that's an aside, because I did a lot of this in the past, is we do, we do capital planning. And it's no slight to our team down there because they agree. We do, our, our version of capital planning is capital reacting. And that's what we do. And, and so, we got to get out front. And, and I don't like 30-year maturation saturation studies because after five years, things get fuzzy, you know? But we need a good five-year study with a 10-year build-out. That's where we need to be focusing on what we do. And, and unfortunately, it's not just the capital planning. It's a lot of areas. I think some of you have seen it. You end up in dealing with tyranny of the urgent. And that's what we do. And that's not planning. And it's like some days, you know, planning shouldn't be in any title I've ever had. It's, 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 you know, Director of Reactionary Services is what I said my title was in my last history. So, I'd like to get out of that because it's a, you're throwing good money at bad, you know?
Whatever your timeline is for putting together an outline of where we need to go there, I think a number of us would be interested in that.
Yeah. I love it.
I'm guessing neither of us would be interested in that.
I think, I think we don't, you know, know what the information we need to help you make that decision. This would not hold in all due work. And then it's like, say, ask them now if you have them. Think of all the things. Send them all away so we can bring that through. He'll kind of speed up the decision. Make sure if we got to, you know, go with these timelines and open up some of these schools as we're hoping to, that, you know, we don't delay it too much. The more we delay in making that decision, it has the implication of when we can only use...
So, here's my thought.
Yeah.
Discussions have been going on for a run of long time for a lot of these things. And I think if we had a deadline, deadlines focus the mind.
Yes.
So, I think it would be helpful if the construction needs could like nail down a deadline so that we can actually deal with stuff.
If we want Kellogg to open by next day.
And we have the ed specs by this day. We, we have, we know exactly the idea. You ask construction people for a deadline and they do it too. We would do that.
Do the ed spec, the ed side of people know that that's the deadline if they're going to get something done?
They don't because it hasn't been, hasn't been formalized to them that Kellogg is going, it's going right now. So, our next level of, of diligence would be, you know, not only be taking down of Kellogg, but if we really, really needed it, I've even looked at the very aggressive two-step. Where part of it is on your design is that you have everything you need in the one. You open up and bring some gray level over. It ends up being a mid-year that you're done. While the other wing of strictly classrooms are being done and occupied. We're setting this up to be aggressive and very aggressive on how we get into this site. The other ones, we're trying not to be as aggressive because they have a lot of issues with it. But this one, we can literally move on this thing really fast. So, you saw it all with Bobian looked like a year ago to right now. And, and we have a tour going tomorrow. If anyone can make it, we'll be walking it with our standard and poor ratings folks. But anyone else is allowed to tag along. You don't even need a hard hat if you're at Bobian right now.
But just for the record, with Kellogg, the instructional folks didn't work with you on the ed specs?
Yeah, we worked with Chris. So, we, we, we have, we have more than a framework, but we need to finish it. And then, so that we are not accused, like the first round, what does that look like? Is that a town hall meeting? Is that run by PAT? Is that run by a board? Is that a listening session? We got to get it going. And that's, that's what we got to do. So, when you say work backwards, I'll say, what do you feel comfortable with and when you're done hearing what he has to say going forward? We go backward. We go open the doors and put kids in backward. And then we listen to you on what you think you need going forward. And then we have to work in that gray area. That's what we do. We work in that overlap area the best we can. That's how we do this.
What time's the tour tomorrow?
Uh, I think by 1:30. We're at Bobian. I think our interview is 12 to 1:00. And then a half hour to drive on 1:30 to 3:00 will be between Bobian tomorrow. And it's amazing. They haven't seen it lately. You haven't seen, it's amazing.
So, Jerry, I'm just looking at the clock.
Yeah.
What would be most helpful in terms of setting a schedule for engagement of the board is, in the short term, would it be some approval discussion, public discussion and approval of overall sequencing with a much tighter focus on the first two since they're the...
Yes. Yes. If you get beyond what we think in terms of how you roll these out construction-wise and cash flow and workflow and/or if it got political, should be Benson before Lincoln, Lincoln before Benson, we'd say, tell us we're on track with Kellogg. Tell us we're on track with, did you still want Madison to go in when Grant comes out of Marshall? It's not sitting vacant for a year. And if that's the case, those are the old term no brainers. And we can get moving and we can have some discussion on the other ones.
So, can, this isn't a decision-making meeting?
No, this is an information.
Can we give sort of a straw poll guidance around Kellogg to, to tell the education side of the house?
Well, this is a public, publicly known meeting. So, we can, yeah, without our names.
Yeah. But just to give you a sense of the board...
So unless, okay, I, I can start. I would say, I'd be comfortable with this unless somebody raises some compelling reason. And what I'd be comfortable with is like an overarching approval with the tightest sheriff's focus on the first two. And knowing that, because the other ones are a little bit out, there's some flexibility. That's what, unless, as we go around, somebody tells me, and there's some compelling reason why, that would be okay. So that, that would be something I could, I'm sorry, I think it's important.
And we would want you to know, we've been at the planning, design, dag meetings on the other ones by fall anyway. It's a staggered start. We got a lot of work to do on these on the front end. This meeting with Benson on where are we going to go and how are we going to, you know, it's a stagger, you're staggering the construction. But we're starting the process, we're not saying anybody will see in two years your design meetings. That's not it. So we're, we're really, that's, that's the whole intent.
And not to mention that it's already contracted.
Yes.
Oh, yes, absolutely. I think this is very definitely what makes sense. And I think it is certainly what makes sense for Benson.
I think that Kellogg and the Benson pieces are, there's no question about the wisdom there. I've, we've had some conversations about the Lincoln-Madison piece, given the enrollment, the capacity constraints at Lincoln currently, and the need for that bigger building sooner rather than later. I don't really, I, I believe that we have a lot of ability to influence the timing of the city piece of our permitting and design review process. Not completely, but we could, we didn't exert any pressure, really, on the 2012 bond, on that work. And so we're kind of operating on assumptions based on that. So, you know, I think that that's worth talking about. But certainly, I'm not saying that I have a strong, I'm strongly advocating for flipping that, or that I would follow my sort. But it's, it's worth talking about, because you've got, you know, seventeen hundred kids in a building for nine hundred. And Madison is, doesn't have the same urgency. But again, it's something worth talking about.
So, so as a board, as a newly seated board, you're going, this board's going to have to do something about enrollment balancing way before we're done with Lincoln or Benson, because you are at sixteen ninety-eight, seventeen oh-three or whatever. And we still have a couple of years to design and a couple of years to construct. If all goes well, we're done with one of those two schools in four years. You still, you still have an issue with those. That's going to, when you create an option area for a few years, you guys are going to have to wrestle with that. Where does Alliance go? How do we enrollment balance? Because these projects are not going to be done tomorrow. They'll be done in four years, a lot of years. So that's out there, and we can't just keep taking Lincoln up to eighteen hundred or nineteen hundred. Something's going to have to happen.
In these, I think it was very clear that they were going to help manage the, there were a whole bunch of discussions. And manage that to seventeen hundred, because I raised the.
Yes, I recall.
Cents of discussions, they were going to manage that, they were going to encourage people to go to Benson. I mean, there was a whole lot of things, so.
Yes.
I, it's sort of like, it seems like we had that discussion before the bond came out, that they acknowledged that that was going to be, you know, how things were, and that they were going to do, they were going to be tight.
Also, was the west side enrollment balancing doesn't come into effect fully until 2018, which takes eighty percent of an entire figure school out of it, which is pretty significant.
I mean, I, to me, I can't see not moving ahead with Madison, just in terms of equity issues and ease. I mean, if, if you can expedite Lincoln through the planning process, that's great. But just from what I know about planning and doing projects downtown versus in the outer east side, I think, I, I, what I worry about is if you flip Lincoln with Madison, then, that the message it sends, and that, then it gets all lulled up in a much bigger issue, you know, planning issue. It's just way more complicated. And then you end up with Madison way, way in the, in the future. And if we're trying to send the message to kids that you've got a great high school in northeast Portland, and you've got functioning effective middle schools, I think Madison becomes part of the larger play. I mean, if I thought Lincoln was easy and Madison didn't need it, it would maybe be an easy one, but I think it's.
And, and we don't, you know, I mean, we construct, we're going to take on anything, you know. But, but you also would have Marshall sitting there for at least two years vacant. And maybe, I mean, maybe one of the things that made Lincoln make sense is because you don't know what to do with Alliance or Pathways. And they're going to, whatever, I'm just saying, you gotta keep remembering that. The Madison also kept Marshall, the sooner you get in and out of Marshall, because there's a possibility by the bond three, you look at Cleveland to Marshall. But if that isn't making sense, and we have to sequence it like we're doing Benson, and just work our way around it, then it also offers you a Marshall as soon as possible to figure out what you're going to do for your overall enrollment balancing. We'll be done using it as a swing side if we didn't go in there with Cleveland. And now you can start to look at that capital planning thing instead of reacting, and how you want to handle that. So the sooner we're done with it, the sooner it comes back to you. I, I just, there's one thing, I want you to finish your kind of doing your straw poll, but then I did want Ken to get out of here. One thing that was new from when we presented to you was, meet with the BAC, what do they think about these design and construction timelines? Because they're all experts, we met with them twice. And then also, Ken, you've got a big old company called Gary, what do you think? And we attached that information as well. And that was what we were tasked to do, and we came back, and that's in here as well. But I wanted to finish hearing around the table what you all thought.
I want to just say one more thing, which is that, and the BAC mentioned this, Kevin mentioned this in his memo, is just pushing back on the notion for Lincoln and Kellogg of, you know, having a mid-year from start. Yeah, and I, and so we want, I think we want to maintain that flexibility in our, in our thinking and in our scheduling.
And we instruct from a construction side, we're happy to do that. Comes down to coordination with the education.
Yeah.
The education team can facilitate that.
And the operations side, the movement.
To try to pack up before Christmas and unpack after Christmas. So we're considering, we've always considered the education side more than that. Is the building going to be ready?
Yeah.
And, and we, we agree, we know that hasn't been taken on before, a mid-year opening of an entire school. But on our end, to be quite honest, if the board and the education folks think they can or can't do it, we're trying to get the contractor off the clock. Their charge is a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand a month, their no conditions cost up there. And we got off the clock in January, and then we actually did real commissioning. We actually moved some things in, we actually had the teachers tour before the end of the year. So you had anxiety all summer long on what they're coming back to. You actually held your dedication ribbon cutting in May instead of whatever, you know. I mean, we're just going to get the contractor off the clock. And then it's up to the rest of the folks to decide if we think we can move in one grade level so far, or if we want to. Those will be great problems for us to think about, that we're going so fast, we're getting done so soon, we're going to be done a half year early. It's a great problem to have.
Do you just not have the capacity to start? And, I mean, I'm not saying this, it's what I said, but do you not have the capacity to start planning on all these? Or just would it just not make sense?
It wouldn't make sense. It'd be dragged out, the architects will probably charge another hundred, two hundred thousand more, because you have nineteen meetings instead of thirteen, because we're just doing it just to keep meeting, so people feel that we're listening to them. It'd be inefficient.
Okay.
Right.
That's a fine answer.
Pardon?
I see that we did it by the time other ideas, codes changing on us.
Yeah. Thumbs up.
What grade is your little sister in?
She's going to the sixth grade.
And, and what school?
At Lane Middle School.
Okay.
So I think, to summarize, I think we have to bring to a board discussion the form of a resolution of a overall, that it should go through a committee. Just an overall, moralizing something like this, so that you have the ability to move forward. The one thing I would ask them not to complicate things, but this is a separate piece, is I'm concerned about the health and safety piece of things. I know this, this is huge work, and it's great that it's moving. But we need to be able to tell the community and communicate that the health and safety pieces are just as important or maybe more important. So not to put that at risk.
And that's something we need to do, like, within the week, about the contracts, how do the contracts come in? And what, tell communities what's happening sometime right now, because we still, we haven't done that.
We have weekly meetings about that, one about that, two about the board. And the all works, we're interested in doing this summer and then beginning of the next year. So we're not holding off your, work is being done. As part of planning, we'll bring you a report to Washington.
We have, we have three things moving right now. We have the summer work for health and safety. We have the going into the fall. And then we have, we're trying to button up into architectural engineering package and design, which will be the 2018 going forward. One of the things that we asked, if you remember, we were in an ideal world, eight contractors, we had eight regions. You start doing everything around the district. We got four. So of the four, they all qualify, they're walking the sites right now. It's also, they believe their capacity is and what they can get done, each one of them individually. So, and that's the fall and the moving forward, and then a little bit of the rest of the summer. But we're already doing work, we're already painting some of these schools. And we already have, we're ready to go on fixture swap-out. So then we have the great, big, long-term picture that you're talking about that we're trying to finalize. But part of it is all hinged on what these four can take on capacity-wise. And we're in a swing shift, so.
It's maybe creating something like this.
If you will be.
For the health and safety, just like a one page or something like.
Perfect.
Like, we can say, the lead in the paint, the lead in the water, this is just generally how it's going to be.
So what we're going to come back to you with is actually very similar this, Julie, because it's going to be, here's, you all know, we have all these categories, you know, ESPOs and RAN on all these dollar amounts. Just about every school has all those. And we're going to come back after the summer work, and we're going to tell you where we're going. And then you'll say, but why? And we're going to say, and this is that listening session with the public and everything. Here's how we all measured risk, and this is how we did this. And even though they might be number ten on ESPOs and number one and three on these, and while you're out there, it doesn't make sense not to do that while you're out there. We're going to bring that to you. We're going to talk about how we put the equity lens on it. We're going to talk about how we put the personal risk liability on it. We're going to tell you how we got, where we got, and it's up to you, Ben. We're, we're going to do the same presentation. And then with that, you'll say, I think we should take that town hall meeting, I think we should, whatever. And then we're going to, and we'll, we'll roll it out into a schedule like that, and then we're on our way. So we're, we're very close.
We'll give them the one experience, whatever, advisor, probably can help us with this work. And experts for the general organization to bring forward for this work. So we will have, by the time we get to you, we will have a full flush of plan that has already been seen and applied on.
And then putting that framework together we talked about for the individual focus groups.
So I'm not sure about timing and everything. But the number one way to communicate with the most parents possible, back to school nights. And if we can have a little script, I'm just thinking, you know, a poster.
That's a great idea.
To put up in a school, of here's the timing and sort of why. And a minute script for the principals to read.
That is such perfect timing with our seven years, seven and a half years of the eight-year bond, it's a perfect timing. We're doing right now is a summer work, and then the metrics and the diligence, and then setting up the packages. That'd be, that'd be a perfect time for us to roll that out.
And just the similar kind of posters that we had to communicate with the public around the bond.
Right.
And we don't have to worry about whether we're applying.
All communication team, they're, they're part of the plan.
They're chopping at the bit for this.
They are, asking these kind of questions.
Yes.
So, yeah, we should think carefully, I think, every year about this time, about what are the key messages at back-to-school night? Because it's now two or three. Parents are there to meet the teacher, but two or three things that we can get out in all our languages is a real opportunity. Do you remember the budget presentations that we, back in two thousand three, four, five? We trained thirty volunteers to go to back-to-school nights, do a three-minute budget presentation. Here's where the money comes from, here's where it goes. That's right, it's only three percent going to the central office, not thirty, kind of a thing. And that was vote wisely, because there's usually something on the ballot, but we couldn't say anything about that except vote wisely. But you can get, if you're, you can get a message like that, and it's, it's really efficient.
Tomorrow morning at nine, we have ten of us that meet. And we're including SIPA in those conversations, it's just not us down there in a vacuum, okay? They're part of our team. We have our risk management, we have our facilities, we have our bond people, we have our, you know, our, our SIPA department. Everyone's in there, we're working this thing. And we're probably one more meeting after this meeting. We kind of lost one with July fourth last weekend, having a pretty good framework that we want to bring you in a board meeting, tell you about why we're thinking what we're thinking, give you that update, get some feedback. Won't be a vote, we'll tell you why where we're at, it's pretty. And then we will launch into, you know, focus groups, and then whatever. So we're, we're really close. We understand the, the perils of everybody wanting everything right now, and wanting a one through eighty-six on each one of the seven criteria. And that's just not how it rolls out, it just doesn't do that, you know. We'll tell you how the packages roll out, what we're talking about. So we're a couple of weeks away from that rollout, that, that metric and how we analyzed it, how we weighted it. We can give you the update on the contractors pretty soon. I wouldn't even wait for a board meeting, we can get that into an update and get it to the board in a memorandum of, of what we're moving on that. And then the back-to-school night is, okay, so this is how the other seven and a half years of this is going to go. And then what's your feedback? So we call it immediate, and then short-term and long-term, that's exactly how we've been addressing it, for my meet.
And we just approved some contracts tonight, right, to give consideration of that.
Those weren't.
Those precise make, uh.
Right.
Revenue contracts from the state.
Right, right.
Like rents.
There's some twenty million dollar plumbing.
That was last week. That was each of the four, up to twenty-two million each, if they had the bandwidth for the entire, but those last week, yes. But you're right, that, those are the four.
That's something to feature.
Those are the four. Was that helpful? I mean, I, it's helpful to us. We, we want, we, we want, we want to move, because that's how we're bred, we're, we're, we're horses, we run, we want to move. But we also want the understanding and protection of it's a resolution and it was a vote. Because people move and change, and we don't want to be out there on, on the edge of the plane. I'm speaking for them, but I know I'm speaking what's on their mind. All right, thank you, guys.
When's the next BAC meeting? There is both the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth on our website.
Okay, we'll look into it. I think, I think there was some people who were out of town for one. And by the way, can I just say, I really like the way you want to take board meetings out to the schools. We did that in every district I was in, and we do it with our VACs. We hold them on different sites, especially if it's a bond school site, so they can see it, and we do it, we're being beforehand.
Want to go Frank Leonard, we don't.
That's exactly what we do.
So if we, if you go to the.
I know, I know you did.
The bond website, what's called bond website, it says the twenty-sixth. And if you click to the BAC, it says the nineteenth. Is that something that should be on the calendar?
We'll double check.
They're already event tracker, we'll, we'll find out. I, I think we had some people where it needed to be involved, who might probably need to.
When I went to the cal, the district calendar, neither of them were on it. So it'd be great to have that.
Well, that's not very kind of her.
And thank you for consulting with those guys informally, and to them for making the time to consult with you, because it's technically sort of not in their purview, but we wouldn't be foolish not to use them as a resource. It's really helpful.
You're welcome. And just lastly, it's not part of this, but we're in the middle stages of having an RP put together for our new performance auditor. If you may know, our other performance auditor, I was a four-year contract, they timed out with their report a few weeks ago. We're actually going to have a member of the DAC sit in on the evaluation and interviews, who's actually an auditor for the seat, is also on our DAC team, very well qualified. And we won't make it by end of August for it to have an approved performance auditor, but it should be by the first board meeting in September. And they'll be right there to have a couple of backgrounds. a couple of backgrounds for a month and a half, and they'll be able to roll right into that October VAC quarterly with an understanding of what's going on.
And you changed that scope of work a little bit, too.
We changed it dramatically.
As the auditor for.
For our performance auditor for the bond. We're in the process of changing that dramatically. It'll be great timing because we don't just want them to, at that point, of either wrap-up of the 2012 except Grant High School, it'll be getting them on board, with the going out and, and, you know, listening to the community on this is how I think you should set the 2017 bond up, and how I think I'd like to audit it. So we, we want here to put.
Well, one last thing, the DAG at right now, since the work, the first phase of work ended, I think there's been, I mean, Michelle asks, there's a lot of dangling, like, we don't know what the final.
So there shouldn't be dangling because what we said we do for Marshall Lotter Report, we did the grant, we didn't do the others, is when you are done with your schematic design, if there's value engineering, and it's of a significant nature, now we don't have a gymnasium, we don't have a library, you know, whatever, we'd like to meet again. We didn't do that with the other ones, we had that meeting, and, and we got that back on track, and wherever our, you should have been there for it.
You'll be there.
All right, we, we had that, we had that meeting, we had the value engineer meeting.
I think there, I think there was.
And then that was our commitment. We don't carry people to construction, you know, when anybody's selecting carpets for us or anything, so that, that's where we're at.
So was there something like a thank you for your service when we opened the school?
So, you know, that's a good point, Julie, because we, 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 a bunch of us, a bunch of us got together after that night, and we did go out and everything, but I don't know if it was. That was with the DAG, too.
Obviously, you didn't invite Scott.
Yeah, yeah. You weren't there, let's leave that place. I remember you now.
That was the one meeting I referenced.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But there was also sort of a, well, we're still getting estimates for something, we don't know if there's any.
So, so you guys tell me, that's not something to come back to the day with. If we promise a full school and no programs being cut, and if it's two million over the budget, or it's a hundred million over the budget, that's our job to make that straight. So we're not cutting program, right? So what would we go back for? I mean, I don't wanna know.
Well, I think Scott's point is there needs to be, like, just communication with this, you've, you completed this piece of the work, the next time we'll contact you is, say, if there's a major value engineering, you forgot the.
And, and we did that.
Or we're going to.
Okay.
Invite you to the opening.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So I guess informally, there was, yeah, we're kind of sweating bullets around the budget, hoping this is gonna work, that there might be.
Yeah, well, we still are.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Only works, yeah.
So just knowing that, and knowing something might happen, with that, with that in the air, and Michelle's gone, so nobody now even knows who to contact if they had a question.
Okay, all right, that's fair.
It's that kind of.
No, that's fair. I mean, there, there hasn't been anything new to say, and, and the charter did talk about where we were dropping off, you know, and where this is done, and we'll see you at the ribbon cutting and all that. We actually did inform all of them for the groundbreaking, we did do that.
Yeah.
But, but that, that's fair, we, we can surf around.
Yeah.
I, I just didn't wanna start precedent that we're gonna start involve DAGs and budgets and things like that.
No, 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 no.
If we know we're delivering program.
Yeah.
Okay. We need help down at our department, but we don't need any more of that kind of help.
I'm still a little upset about the indoor trap disappearing.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.